All right, being six o'clock, I'll call the Marathon County Board of Supervisors to order. Please rise with me and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing. Following the Pledge of Allegiance will be a silent moment of reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And maybe just a little bit late, maybe 20 some hours, but I'd like to recognize and thank each and every one of the individuals that we have in the audience and the board that has been a veteran or is a veteran. So if they, all of veterans, would please stand in recognition of Veterans Day and thank you for their -- thank you for your service. We will move on to the reading of the notice, please.
The adjourned annual meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of 38 members, will convene at the Marathon County Courthouse Assembly Room, 504 Street Wausau, on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., and the agenda was duly signed and posted.
Thank you. I would like to request that everyone please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices as to not to be an interruption to the meeting, and I thank you for your indulgence. We'll move on to roll call, and I'd ask everyone, please sign into roll call. Maybe we could ask IT. Jerry, could you assist Supervisor Rosenberg?
I don't know.
Got it. He's got it. We're good. We're good. All right. Thank you. And we have 36 members present and one member that is granted attendance virtually, and so, and one member was excused. So, thank you for everyone. So we'll move on to item number six, and I'd like to welcome all of the visitors that we have with us tonight in the viewing audience and also the viewing public, and thank you for your interest in county government. And we will then move on to item B. Any announcements and/or reports by standing committee chairs and/or their designees? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items C8 through items C12C, what is your pleasure? Motion by Supervisor Drebek and seconded by Supervisor Rosenberg. Supervisor Sandalsky, please.
Can I get a 12B? Can I get 12B pulled for a separate vote?
12B has been requested and granted to be removed from the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve consent items C8 through items C12C with item 12B removed. Is everybody clear where we're voting on? And we'll proceed to vote. Just a second, the clerk has to pull out item 12B from the consent agenda and list it separately. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. Thank you. Now, item 12B, what is your pleasure? Motion by Supervisor Marash and seconded by Supervisor Ritter. Supervisor Sandalsky, please.
Thank you. The reason why I wanted a separate vote on it is because I had, actually last fall, I had a constituent contact me about one of the, in the county purview under the county parks. I agree with the part of the maintenance and that, but I don't agree with the part with the ordinance and the oversight and all that, because this person, they were having a fishing tournament for invasive species cleanup, and they received approval from the village of Red Mountain, the Wausau, or the Lake Wausau Association and the Sheriff's Department. And they did a bunch of work. They talked to a lot of people, went through the process, and they got the okay from everyone. And then three days prior to the tournament, the Parks, the Marathon County Parks Department contacted them and told them they could not do their invasive species cleanup, or their invasive species tournament to clean up the Lake Wausau. So they didn't want me to push the issue at the time, so I never made a real big deal of it. As you're helping to clean up the lake, invasive species, the Parks Department kind of turned their back on them. So I'm in favor of the, as far as, that's why I'm going to vote no on this, but I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the Park Commission and Environmental Resources Intergovernmental Agreement to Provide Park and Recreation Services for the City of Wausau, Resolution 54-24, and the motion is to approve. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried, but is not unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to items D, Human Resources and Finance and Property Committee. Item D13, Acceptance of the Department of Energy Grant, Resolution 57-24. This is a budget amendment and does require a two-thirds majority vote. Motion by Supervisor Rosenberg and seconded by Supervisor Lemmer. Any discussion? Okay, we will proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. And we will move on to item D14, the 2025 Budget and Property Tax Levy Resolution, Resolution 56-24. And before we start, I would ask that the corp counsel provide a little bit of context and procedural procedures.
Sure. Just a reminder on process for the budget. So the first thing that's in order is a motion and a second to move the budget to the floor. So that's the first item. Once the budget is on the floor, if anyone has any amendments to offer, you would need to have the floor and make the motion to move that amendment for discussion. That has to be seconded. So if you plan to offer an amendment, you do need to take the floor and offer that amendment, and then those will be discussed as they're offered. So just a little context as to process, that the budget first is moved to the floor by motion, then if any amendments are offered, they're offered by whoever wishes to offer them.
Okay, we will proceed. And item D14, the 2025 Budget and Property Tax Levy Resolution, Resolution 56-24. Motion by Maske and seconded by Supervisor Marash. Any discussion? Supervisor Robinson, please.
Just for clarification, Amendment One was adopted by the Finance Committee, was part of the published budget and therefore is incorporated, and if somebody wanted to remove it, they would have to take an action to do so. But I would move approval of Amendment Two. Can we combine Two and Three? Those were cleanup resolutions from our Finance Director, which makes changes to bring the budget in line with our actual expenditures. It has no impact on the total levy, but it's just adjustments to the amount of the budget. It takes it from $181 million to $198 million budget and then just transfers funds from various appropriations that are not levy-related.
Because they were listed in our packet separately, I'll take those amendments separately. So is your motion to amend item number two, okay? Amendment number two, motion by Supervisor Robinson and seconded by Supervisor Conway. Any discussion on, again, what has been termed cleanup from an accounting standpoint for the budget? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried, but not unanimous. And we will move on to any other discussion. Okay, now you can request to speak. Supervisor Robinson, please.
I would move to adopt Resolution, or Amendment Number Three.
The motion is to adopt Amendment Number Three, which is additional cleanup on the accounting. Is there a second? So the clerk has to put each of the amendments in to record the vote and also the motion and the second. So as soon as -- and the seconded by Supervisor Rosenberg. On Amendment Three, again, accounting cleanup, item number three in your packet. Any discussion on Amendment Number Three? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on Amendment Number Three. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried, but again, not unanimous. Moving on, any other discussion? Supervisor Sandalsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to bring Amendment Number Seven forward.
Amendment Number Seven is offered by Supervisor Sandalsky, and as soon as the clerk has it entered, we will then take up a second and a discussion. Okay, and the second is by Supervisor Jensen. Supervisor votes, please.
Thank you. Just put some words together on paper here from the, I'm sure everybody here got a lot of calls in the last couple of days, so just want to make sure I didn't forget anything. But anyway, I've had the opportunity to listen to the discussion at yesterday's HR Finance and Property meeting, and I've taken time to review all the proposed budget amendments. Having served on this board for 11 years and having served as a town chairperson for 10, I know the commitment we all have to doing right by our constituents. As was discussed at the recent HR meeting, it was referenced back at a number of months ago when we adopted our budget priorities and gave direction to the administrator to not spend the general fund reserves in building the budget. Marathon County has a longstanding strategy relative to funding capital needs. We call it our CIP rollover process. We budget conservatively on revenues. We use unspent funds and revenues above budget in the year after the audit to fund capital projects. That strategy, along with the wheel tax, has limited our need to borrow money for capital. From the conversations at the meetings, I understand there's a desire to better understand our reserves and capital improvement process. Some members express interest in repealing the wheel tax. I support having the conversations about all these things and being very intentional and transparent with the public. Of course, everyone we represent would prefer taxes to go down and not pay the wheel tax. That said, I know from talking to my constituents, they want us to continue to deliver high-quality services. I also have heard from numerous constituents in my community that if borrowing costs us more money than our current process, we shouldn't borrow. I support having the conversation about strategy, but I can't support any of the amendments that spend down our reserves today or eliminate the wheel tax without having the conversation to be very confident that it won't cost us more money tomorrow. I also, not in favor of doing anything regarding reserves, though knowing for certain that it won't impact our bond rating. I think we owe it to our constituents to be focused on the future. This all being said, I do support Amendment Number Six, which was discussed at HR Financing and supported by the committee. Seems logical to budget and a bit more revenue in that area. To be clear, I just would like to point out, and I asked for these numbers actually last week, and I finally got them today, for a $232,000 house, the increase for the county is $23. $23. So I'm getting phone calls saying we have $68 million, all this, and they ask me, well, what does that cost? For if you own a $232,000 home, you're going to be paying $23 more this year in taxes for the county. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Sandalsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I'd like to thank Supervisor Hoppa for bringing this amendment forward. We need to take a long, hard look at the people we serve here in Marathon County. Many are struggling while the county is sitting very well financially. I feel there are a huge disconnect between many on this board and the people they serve. Yes, I fully support this amendment. As I was campaigning for my first term on county board, I visited well over 700 houses, and a good number of these people had asked me when the wheel tax is going away. Well, there was an effort two years ago with an amendment, but it didn't pass. So now we still sit here with the county highway reserve fund at $64,230 and $213 approximately from our paperwork we received. Honestly, if you believe in doing what is right for the people you serve, you will vote to have this wheel tax removed when you see enough is enough. Heck, we have enough for the administrator's highway department with the gold toilets. When do, okay, when is the county board going to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers? Today is the day. Let's do what's right for the people we serve. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Fiffrick, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in 2016, I was one of a few supervisors that voted against establishing a Marathon County vehicle registration fee, which passed by a wide margin. Currently, I serve as the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee and have seen firsthand the effect that this additional revenue has had on our county roadways. We've been able to raise our overall Pacer rating from 6.66 in 2015 to 7.27 in 2024. Traveling around the state and the Midwest, I'm very proud of the quality roadways that we provide in the county compared to a lot of other places. There's been a lot of conversation in regards to the amount of funds held in the highway fund, but keep in mind that we have a major capital project coming up. The relocation of the Wausau and Mosley Highway Shops is projected to cost $59 million. We need those funds to limit the amount of funds needed for that project. The more we deplete the fund for the short-term savings will only lead to more borrowing resulting in a more expensive overall project. Pennywise and pound foolish. I don't think this is the time or process we should be using to evaluate the current vehicle registration fee. I would like to see this brought through the committee process so that everybody has the opportunity to review the facts and make an informed decision. Thank you.
I just want to correct one statement. When the fund is identified as $64 million and the administrator and finance director sent out an email and it clarifies that $64 million is not all dollars, first off, there's almost, well, there is $7,985,075 that are capital assets. Those are trucks, those are equipment, and we can't use them to pay bills. There's also a $7 million reserve for capital replacements in that fund. And then there was a correction that was sent out in the working capital calculation, and that amounts to $7,172,340 in that account, leaving a remaining unassigned fund of $42,72,078. I just want to be transparent with the taxpayers and understand what that is, and those balances are effective as of 12/31/2023. Supervisor Hoppa, please.
Thank you, Chair. Our constituents remember the wheel tax was supposed to be temporary. When they hear it is contributed to the rise in to be used later fund, while they are struggling at current prices, it makes me angry. I've had 21 phone calls and text messages before 10:00 a.m. today. Apparently, I have a really active district, and everyone was the same thing. A few of them added not to raise taxes, but for the most part, it is the wheel tax. I've actually had some of them come to my home, the ones that live close enough, and a lot of people are just plain angry about this. Our county is not destitute. The projects that you want to get done down the road will get done down the road, and I don't believe that the wheel tax is going to stop this county from doing anything it wants to do. It never has before, has it? You know, I haven't been around the board for that long. I've watched plenty of movies or videos before I was elected, but in viewing this, I have seen the board go forward on whatever they want to go forward, they get it done. And I don't think my constituents appreciate it when so many of them are elderly and/or disabled and can't get a taxi to go to the hospital, or they can't afford to buy food, and they don't have families that will give them rides. I don't think it's fair. It's like fining them for being, I don't want to say poor, but in the category that they can't afford these things. So I was elected to support my district and to listen to my constituents, and I really feel the need that I need to support this as well. So please consider, not just yourself and not just the new department building, think about how much the county has invested in their new endeavors, and then think about the little guys that are paying the price. Thank you.
I'd ask corp counsel in discussion because I think we need to be clear that what would be required to repeal the vehicle registration fee. So I'd ask that corp counsel, please do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there was a discussion about this a bit at HR Finance yesterday, but the wheel tax was created as a county ordinance in our general code of ordinances, and so this amendment is in order. You can remove this revenue from the budget. However, that does not repeal the wheel tax. The ordinance is still on the books. That does take a separate action to repeal that ordinance. State administrative code also requires that we provide at least 90 days' notice to the state if that's an action we're going to take. So a repeal of that ordinance would also have to have at least a 90-day lead time, just so everyone understands that process. So you can remove that revenue from the budget. That wouldn't stop the registration fee from being collected until the board took that separate action to repeal that ordinance and give the state the required legal notice.
Supervisor Robinson's next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As one of the persons that voted for this in 2016 with the thought that it should have been permanent on day one, I continue to support the wheel tax and for a variety of reasons. First of all, the county was promised 30% funding for our local roads by the state of Wisconsin. We're at 17%. 17%, a far cry from 30%. General transportation aids have, over the last 10 years, remained stagnant. In fact, next year's projected general transportation aids are lower than five of the last nine years in terms of the money we're getting through general transportation aids, and it's a six-year rolling average. The wheel tax generates just less than $2, or less than $3 million annually, and that's used for bituminous paving to keep our roads in good shape. We looked at Washington County's model. They developed a plan called the 2050 Plan, and how are they going to maintain all their roads and bridges between now and 2050? And we've had some discussions and haven't finalized the plan, but basically, that plan outlined the need for continuous and increased funding on the part of the county to maintain our roads and replace our bridges in a timely manner. If you take the wheel tax away, you take away not $3 million this year, $3 million every year, and the reserves, if there are reserves, they will be spent down, then will be forced to borrow. The acquisition cost for the wheel tax is what, .03% versus bonding borrowing costs? If you go out and borrow for 10 years, a 10-year note or a 20-year note, you're going to keep compiling debt on debt on debt, and you'll be just like the state of Wisconsin where all of a sudden 20-plus percent of the DOT budget went for basically paying back the bonds associated with the state highway system, and we weren't fixing the roads that needed to be fixed. As unpleasant as taxes are, sometimes they're necessary, and this is a user fee directly associated with the maintenance of roads. It goes into the bituminous fund for paving those roads. It is critical for us on a long-term basis to have a steady source of revenue to make the commitments we need to maintaining those roads and keeping up the Pacer rating that Chair Fiffrick talked about.
Supervisor Seibert, please.
Thank you, Chairman Gibbs. I too was around in 2016, and I was on the Infrastructure Committee when the user fee, there was a big argument back there as it a tax or as a user fee. The reason I say it's a user fee is because everybody pays equal. And if you looked at everybody in this room's property value, there wouldn't be one that would be exactly alike. Somebody might be paying $10 towards it if it was to put on the levy. Somebody might be paying $80 according to your property value. By everyone paying $25, everybody is equal, right across the board. If you go through your community and look at where a lot of people aren't paying any property tax, they're also paying the wheel tax. So back in 16, when we brought the wheel tax in, the user fee, it was supposed to be extra because we were behind on blacktopping, roads were in rough shape. It was supposed to be a $2.5 or $2.6 million extra to the highway department, and as soon as it was passed, the county decided they were going to take that amount of money out of that budget. So the next year, we should have been working with $5 million. We were only working with $2 million, and there was a sunset on it. So we took the sunset off. only working with 2 million, and there was a sunset on it. So, we took the sunset off. And I just think today that, that wheel tax, or user fee is the, is the most honest and equal fee it can be compared to what it is. And I don't see in, in amendment number, number seven, I don't see anything there about removing the wheel tax. Am I wrong or am I right? When they talk about removing 2,980,000, I, I think it's, I've got to write amendment number seven, you said, right?
Correct, correct.
So, where's that money coming from?
It, it's removing the revenue from the, that's generated from the wheel tax. But again, as the corp councils clearly stated, that would take separate actions. So, this is only removing the revenue, and there is no corresponding action to repeal the wheel tax. So, you're, you're absolutely correct.
So, I, okay, I, I understand more. So, if, if, can we make an amendment to the amendment to leave the wheel tax in place?
No.
Is that?
I think the appropriate action would be to vote, if you're, if you're not in favor of the amendment, would be to vote down the amendment, and then, then the amendment would be, would be dead. It wouldn't remove the revenue. Again, you know, the discussion that we've had, at least at HR Finance, I think lends itself to a discussion that really needs to happen between the infrastructure committee, the HR finance committee, as far as what is the appropriate funding level in reserves, what is the appropriate funding strategy to effectuate the roads and the road conditions that we want to maintain, and what, what is needed to do that. One of the things that has been suggested and was discussed, and actually, I understand that the HR finance committee chair and the infrastructure committee chair have scheduled a joint meeting to actually have that meaningful discussion. I think the one thing that I would, I would, I would just point out is when we, in this action, is potentially before the action of actually repealing of the wheel tax. It removes the revenue from the fund or from the, from the budget, but it doesn't effectively repeal the wheel tax. So, if we want to have a meaningful, purposeful discussion about strategy on how to fund our roads, let's have that, and let's have that discussion. And if wheel tax is to be repealed, let's, let's have that discussion. But let's have that in a meaningful manner, and because it hasn't been discussed at the HR, at the infrastructure committee meeting.
Okay, I just got one more thing. Now, if the wheel tax is left in, we're guaranteed that 2.9 million has to be spent on highways, correct?
Absolutely. There's a, there's a state statute that, that corresponds with if the, if the county puts in a registration fee, that registration fee money cannot be used for anything other than infrastructure, transportation, excuse me, transportation.
So, if the wheel tax would be appealed down the road?
Pardon me?
If the wheel tax was appealed down the road?
Repealed, okay.
What would be the first amount that would be attacked if the, the highway department is short of money? I mean, all of a sudden, at the end of this, we, we've got 3 million that has to be used for roads, and all of a sudden, that's gone. Now, he has to spend 3 million on, on blacktopping. So, thank you. That's what I've got.
Supervisor Lemer, please.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. Could somebody in this room just answer me? Does the wheel tax money, since it's used and it's less than $3 million for bituminous covering, does it contribute to the reserve at all?
No. Supervisor Marshall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that in passing the, the amendment, that anyone who would vote for the amendment, which is a 50% threshold, would also vote later to repeal the wheel tax. I can imagine someone would change their vote. So, that can be done at a later date. A budget amendment after tonight will require a two-thirds majority. Tonight, it only requires 50% of people to vote for this. I did have a couple of questions of administration. What was the highway rollover last year?
I don't have that readily available. I really don't know.
A lot of that accounting is done at the highway department, and, and so I don't know that we have those numbers readily available. Had we known the question, we could have, could have done the research on it. But I apologize. I don't, I don't, we don't have the answer.
I imagine that there was, there was some rollover. What we're doing is we're asking to, we're asking everyone to pay for an asset, a building, that has a life of 30 years. But you're saying, let's, let's make, make sure that we pay for that today to avoid bonding. But the asset has a useful life of 30-plus years. So, you're asking today's taxpayers, today's seniors, to fund something that has a long life. Also, before the wheel tax, did we pave our roads? Because essentially, what you're saying is the wheel tax goes 100% to paving. What that did was money is fungible. It just let that, created that hole that you could use that money that is now wheel tax to fund other things. Thank you.
Supervisor Hoppa, please.
I also would like to amend that amendment by saying, I understand about the 90 days and having to get it taken care of through the state. I would like this to be amended so that the amount of 2,235,000 is used instead of the 2,980,000, and it would begin on April the 1st, which means that if we sent the information to the state to stop the wheel tax, nobody would be charged that, that amount of money during that 90 days. Everything would begin fresh and clean on April the 1st. Thank you.
That motion would be out of, well, part of the motion would be out of order. The date in your, of motion to amend would be out of order. Corp counsel, you want to provide clarity, please?
Sure. So, my understanding of the intent is to change the, the number so that it does anticipate collection of revenue January, February, and March in anticipation of, of a potential repeal taking effect in April. So, you can certainly amend this amendment to change that number, but you can't put a sunset date into an amendment. That, that's a separate action to repeal the wheel tax. That repeal would have to have the sunset date in it. That's a separate action.
Okay, Supervisor Sandalsky, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of things.
I apologize. Supervisor Hoppa, you still have the floor. Is there a, do you, do you want to clarify your amendment to the amendment?
I don't know how to do that. I mean, I know in my head what I want to do, but if it, if it is not acceptable, what else can I do?
So, if your amendment to the amendment is to change the number from 2,980,000 to the 2 million number that, that you said that I didn't write down, that would be in order without the date attached to it. So, we could interpret your amendment to the amendment as that, and then that would need a second.
But, but again, it wouldn't, it, it clearly, because the repeal of the registration fee does require separate board action, the, the two don't coincide.
Then I would suggest we leave it as it is.
Okay, all right. So, you've withdrawn your amendment to the amendment. Okay. All right. Supervisor Sandalsky, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple other things I want to talk about with the other counties. So, Chippewa County, they had theirs going for four years, and they revisited, I believe it was 2019, they repealed theirs, as they, they didn't need a necess, necessity for it anymore. Clark County, I had a conversation with the commissioner there last night, actually, and they had a vote on it, and they, they turned theirs down because they didn't need a necessary. And also, maybe some, some of the supervisors in Wausau could clarify this, but I heard, I heard through the grapevine, I believe it was that Wausau voted on it. Maybe somebody could clear this up, and they turned theirs down too. Maybe one of the Wasas supervisors could clarify that for me. Thank you.
Okay, I, I know that it was discussed in their budget preparation, and, but there was never, I don't believe there was a vote ever on whether to implement the wheel tax or registration fee for the city of Wausau's residents. So, thank you. Supervisor Wilhelm, please.
Thank you, Chair. Something that concerns me is, so, we keep paying the wheel tax, and we want to build a $59 million facility for the highway department. We're going to be borrowing and putting down $26 million. We're going to be borrowing a large sum of money, which is going to go on the debt levy. And to me, if we could look at, I mean, we have $42 million unaccounted for. If we could look at somehow maybe downsizing, because 59 million would be a pretty nice facility, I'd have to assume, and pay for it with cash out of there and keep the wheel tax. That way, we don't have any debt levy going up in the future, which is something I was thinking about and trying to keep taxes down for the, our constituents. And we would still have the funding going in for the roads if we use that money instead of, instead of borrowing. And that way, we might be smaller, but at least we would be, we would be not borrowing any money. Thank you.
Supervisor Robinson, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that we've tentatively scheduled a joint infrastructure and human resource, finance, and property committee meeting for 1 o'clock on December 5th to talk not only about the facility plan, but also about the fund balance and, and formalize that process. But I would also like to point out that an ordinance supersedes the budget, budgeted line item. So, if you adopt a, an ordinance at a later date terminating the wheel tax, that takes precedent over anything in the budget, and that requires a simple majority. But again, while we have a reserve, we, we've got money committed for working capital, other projects. Highway Commissioner Griesbach shared with me this morning that we've got a project in Edgar and County H where if we move, advance it on schedule, the state's asking us to come up with another half a million dollars for that project. We can delay it to 2028. That's a discussion that will need to take place with the village of, of Edgar. But we've had a number of culverts fail where we've dipped into those reserves. We've, we've spent 4,343,000 this year. Next year, we're projecting just under 3 million out of fund, out of the fund balance, and we've been drawing it down. Last year, we spent down $2 million. We had a, a lower balance than the year before. So, I think people are aware of the fact that we, we have a good amount of money in there, but we're trying to use it prudently. But I, but I also want to make sure that everybody understands that we need to fund bituminous resurfacing. You do it through a wheel tax and levy and other sources. You do it through bonding, or you, you can look at levy increases, but with the net new construction, this year, we had a little bit over $1 million of net new construction available to the county. That's not going to cover your bonding. So, where are you going to get the money? You can, you know, you can't, you're going to need to generate it on an annual basis. You can't. I don't think we've got that, that amount of money, and certainly, we don't have that amount of excess money within our budget. So, I, I think we have to be real. We, we need a permanent source of funding for bituminous projects. I live in the city. They don't have, I don't have any county-funded roads in my district. I think there's seven-tenths of a mile in the city that is, that county maintains through the county highway system. But it is important for me to be able to hop on Highway Z and W and K and whatever road it is to get to a location. And it's important for economic development, for farm economy, and for people to get to and from work. So, we need to think about how we're going to fund it. Again, levy, borrow, or wheel tax. There aren't any other options.
I would, I would, I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't say there was, there is one other option. And that other option is to not repair the roads. And so, if we, if we take $3 million out of the, out of, and we, and we don't backfill, meaning we don't fill the hole that we create, by that $3 million revenue now decrease, the infrastructure committee has had a discussion about how and what, what level of pacer rating, meaning the quality of, of county highway system we want to have. We have the largest county road system in the state, over 612 miles of county road system. To maintain those roads, the, the, the infrastructure committee has had various discussions. They need to either grind and resurface 30 miles a year to maintain a 20-year life cycle on roads. So, roads are revisited every, every mile in the county is revisited every, every 20 years, and money is put into every mile of county road system. So, we can stretch that out. If we take the 3 million out, we're going to have to stretch that to 40 years, and your roads are not going to be in the same shape that they're currently in. So, just understand that that's also another option. Supervisor Dickinson, please. Or Vice Chair Dickinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know the, the answer. All I know is that, and the administrator actually doesn't know the answer to how much reserves, you know, we put from highway last year. And I, I will say, I'm a little concerned about that, given we knew this discussion was going to happen. Every year, the reserves grow, and we use money out of the reserves. We shift money. We're raising taxes every year. So, even though $23 this year, what was it last year, what was the year before, I guarantee you, it probably didn't go down, especially the last couple with valuations, property valuations going up the way they have. So, we have money in reserves. We have discussed, you know, there isn't a good plan on, on how to use that. There's a little bit of fear going on, Mr. Chair, about bond rating, and we're not going to fix our roads. I don't think anyone in this room is, is going to destroy our roads by transferring money that we have from one account to another. In addition, there's no indication, there's been no decision on the highway department move, move, that, that hasn't happened. There's been direction. So, to say, well, we're going to use 30 million of that reserve fund to do that, well, we don't know, just like we don't know a lot of things. So, there's a lot of questions there. So, ultimately, what it comes down to is we're taking money from people and we're putting it into reserves, whether it come from a user fee, whether it come from taxes. We know this is what's happening, and I just question why we continue to do that with not having a plan. Government's responsibility, as I stated before, is not to take your money. You budget for a certain amount, you take that money in, and you use it. And that unused amount always happens. It always happens. And so, I'm just, I'm asking, when does that stop? And with this particular resolution, as stated, it doesn't say the user fee, doesn't say the wheel tax. It still doesn't mean you can't say, you know what? We're not going to, we're not going to have that other tax money. We're going to use that money in reserve. So, really, what you're doing is you're just amending the budget in a way that, that moves this money into a place where it doesn't have to come out of people's pockets. I will ask one question, and that is, in the resolution, it states other taxes. The 2.98 million comes from other taxes. What does that mean? Is that the levy, or is that some other? that some other? I'd look for clarification on that.
Finance Director Vensky, please. I think that's where we book the revenue when it comes in from the state. Is that not correct?
That's the appropriate ledger account for it. It's considered an other tax.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, please.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask a question for administration, which Supervisor Lemer had that question, Supervisor Robinson touched on briefly. The question was if the wheel tax revenue ends up in the Highway Fund, and the answer to that was no. But the bituminous surfacing fund gets generated not only from wheel tax, but also from general levy. So if the wheel tax funding gets used first, any unused funds then goes to the Highway Fund, the reserve. Is that correct?
I think that would be accurate, that there's the, using the vehicle registration fee revenue first in the event, for example, we budgeted project costs that ultimately came in lower because the state funded a greater percentage of a project, that levy portion would go into that, to that reserve.
Thank you.
Supervisor Radke, please.
Yeah, I'm glad we're having this discussion. When I knocked on doors to get elected and stuff, I definitely heard this come up a few times. I remember when it came on and that it was supposed to be, you know, a short, you know, a set period of time. And I think a few of my friends were joking about how, yeah, probably will never go away. But, you know, the fact that now that I'm on here and I'm looking over everything, I've had a couple of conversations with John Robinson, Kurt, to get a little bit better understanding and the importance of our roads, you know. I understand it's a difficult time, you know, prices are up, but just let's think about how important our roads are, you know, emergency. Our family and friends are driving on these roads. Our economy depends on these roads. And if we spend this money, you know, we have this money, I think it'd be more expensive to get rid of the wheel tax. And then later, if we got to borrow, it's going to cost us more money. And to maintain the roads at the level we need to, I feel, I've kind of changed my mind. I feel we should keep the wheel tax. Thank you.
Supervisor Marash, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about how much interest is being accrued on these fund balances. For instance, the Highway Department with the reserve, just the $26 million that we've got sort of earmarked for the Highway Department. Are we earning interest on these fund balances? And if so, where is that money going? Or where is it? How do we see it? How much is it?
Short answer on, are you getting interest? Yes, you're getting interest on investments. Your ability to invest as a county government is different than your ability to invest as an individual. There are various requirements as to what that looks like. And Sam, I'll give you a minute to consider. The question was, are we accruing interest for funds held in the Highway Fund balance? And if so, where is that booked in the financials? My answer was yes, we are accruing interest. However, our ability to invest funds is restricted as a governmental entity. It's different than what the ability is of individuals to invest. Do you want to talk a little bit about how we budget interest income within that enterprise fund for Highway? And then I'll, going back to the question about the change in net position of the Highway Fund from 23, excuse me, 22 to 23, I can pull from the audited financials.
And the change in that fund balance was about 2.2 million. So when we're looking at interest, we do accrue interest on the cash value that's in there. We do have a pooled cash kind of type of investment. There is an account in the Highway Fund under the Administration Cost Center, currently budgeted at $300,000 in the 2025 budget. Is there something else in that question? I apologize. Correct, it went down. Yes. If we look at the financial statements between 2022 and 2023, the Highway Fund balance went down about $2.3 million. And that's just in the fund balance in and of itself. Probably planned reserves that were spent, but I'd have to look a little bit more closely to see a specific reason why that may or may not have been. But I think that took care of the interest information that was needed. Okay.
Okay, Supervisor Opal, please.
I didn't touch anything.
Okay.
I'm just sitting here listening.
I will disregard. Supervisor Sandalski, and just to be clear, this is your third time speaking on the amendment.
Okay, thank you. I just had one other thing to kind of clear up here that even if we, so we pass this, we reduce the levy, and then we pass it to get the wheel tax, remove the wheel tax, we can always revisit this if our funds, if our reserve funds start dropping down too much in a couple of years, we can always revisit this and bring it back. I mean, we can give them a break for a while, give the citizens a break for a while, and always bring it back if it gets too tight. I mean, kind of be a little more fiscally responsible to the people. Thank you.
Supervisor Drabek, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, could we postpone this until after those committees meet? That way, we can get, and I know that, and make an amendment then. I know it has to be a two-thirds, I believe, amendment then, but would that be a problem? It's a good idea. Then two-thirds shouldn't be a problem, right?
Well, here's the thing. As Corp Counsel has pointed out, the ordinance would require a simple majority to repeal the wheel tax or the registration fee, would be a simple majority. And the understanding that we have is that there would not be a budget amendment needed because you already have removed the revenue, the revenue source. So I think your option of, well, you would have to vote down the amendment today, and then the committee would have their work and do their work and bring forward their recommendation. And if their recommendation is to repeal the wheel tax, it would take a simple majority and it would effectuate. And you would have an implementation date, the 90-day delay. And the implementation date then would be clear, and your amount of revenue would be clear, and you wouldn't need a separate budget amendment and wouldn't need a two-thirds majority. Okay, so just to clarify, you might need a budget amendment at that point to, just the clarification would be that you would need, because you did reduce the revenue, you would have to have a budget amendment identifying where you're going to get the revenue from. And obviously, the most prudent, or the most simplest response would be you would pull it from Highway Reserve to fill the remaining shortfall.
You could also not adopt a budget amendment and instead just cut the service level. So if you're not budgeting the additional money for bituminous resurfacing, you just wouldn't do that portion of the bituminous resurfacing.
Okay, Supervisor Hagan, please.
Interesting discussion. I'm kind of new on the board. This is probably the first time I've spoken, but having a hard time with a long discussion over $25 fee on a car license. Being a native of Minnesota, their car licenses are based on the value of the car. My son sells Mercedes cars and they're, they have guys getting LLCs in Montana so they can license their car out there to save the license money. They're $1,000 for a car, like he does. When I moved out here in 1994, it was $250 for an average sedan. So I'm having a hard time with that. And I'm all for maintaining the roads and getting that $25 user fee out there to maintain the roads, because in my career, last few years, I drive Highway 153, and that could shake the bolts out of any car for the last five or six years. So we need to keep that stuff maintained. Thank you.
Supervisor Drabek, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I wasn't quite done yet.
Okay, sorry, I apologize.
Now I gotta try to remember what I was going to say. Yeah, I'm just wondering, there's so many options here that are available. I mean, there's options like, okay, if we were going to repeal the wheel tax, could we take it off in like a five-year period, like $5 a year or something like that, if we're considering doing that? In that way, it's not quite as much of a hit on the budget. Different things like that. But realistically, my constituents would really like to have a plan as far as this new building and all that. They want to see a plan before they're paying a lot of money out, or they want to know what's happening, when, and all that. So, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Cyber, please.
Thank you, Chairman Gibbs. That figure of $2,980,000, can that be lowered with an amendment? I mean, everybody would like to see some kind of a cut. If she suggested $2,400,000, I think our...
Again, I think it could be amended, but understand that the ordinance that put the $25 registration fee in place is still there. And so I think in order to do that, I think the discussion needs to take place at Highway as to how you're going to do what, come up with a strategic plan on how you're going to fund that and not try to do something at the last minute. But I respect the will of the board, but you could make an amendment to that. But again, understand that separate action is needed to change the $25. The $25 is by ordinance, and that doesn't change by changing the budget.
Right. I'm a little confused now. Where does it say in this amendment anything about the user fee?
It doesn't.
So you can pass this amendment, the user fee stays where it's at unless we bring it up later. So if we were lower this to $1 million, and that would pass, that has nothing to do with the wheel tax. I mean, you know, somehow, we've confused the wheel tax with this amendment. This amendment doesn't say anything about the wheel tax.
Corp Counsel, please.
So in this amendment, the other taxes account, 41830, and Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, that's the account where the revenue from the wheel tax goes? So that $2.98 million is the projected revenue from the wheel tax as it's currently on your books. If you change that number, you're projecting a different amount, but we're still going to collect, what we're going to collect based upon the number of vehicles registered in Marathon County. So that's it.
This is tied directly to the wheel tax. It is directly tied to the revenue from the ordinance that created the registration fee, correct? Because that's the account where the revenue comes in. So it's tied to that account. So then, do we need a follow-up action to remove that account off of there to get the wheel tax separated from this amendment? Corp Counsel?
I mean, my understanding is that that was the point of the amendment, was to remove the revenue from the wheel tax. So if that wasn't the intent, then you could make a different amendment. I guess I'm not, I'm probably not understanding your question. So I apologize.
Yeah. Sam, Finance Director Vensky, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What this budget amendment effectively does is it takes out the wheel tax revenue and replaces it with reserve. So again, as they stated, we're still going to collect the tax because it's an ordinance, and we're going to collect it regardless. So what will happen is we will record a revenue in an account that has a zero budget. Now, if the wheel tax were to get repealed next year, you can most certainly do a budget amendment to reduce that revenue in an equal proportion to what the wheel tax would be, and then cover the remaining budget with reserves, which would effectively be the same as the one that's presented as the amendment. But this in and of itself will not affect the wheel tax, but that is the account that the wheel tax is receipted into. Even though it's called other taxes, that's, the only thing that's receipted in there is wheel tax.
Yeah, the only thing that comes into that account is exclusively the receipts from the DOT for the registration fee. Okay, thank you.
And if I can just add one thing, as Sam referenced, you're still, and as Mike and the Chair have referenced, you're still going to collect that revenue until such time as your ordinance is repealed. Based on state law, however, it was also referred to, we would receipt that revenue. Its use is restricted, no differently than it is restricted today, to transportation functions.
Supervisor Boots, please.
Thank you. I remember a movie, and the thing was, this would have been great if we talked about this yesterday. We, this is the earliest we've started the budget process. How is it that two weeks before the budget is due, now we have all these amendments coming forward? It's kind of frustrating, I'll be honest with you. We talk about being transparent. Let's be transparent then. Bring these up way before we're bringing them up. We've had a lot of time to bring these forward, guys, a lot of time. So that's my frustration. I'm not going to call the question. I really, really want to, but I just wanted to get that out there. It's frustrating because we've given the time. We've given everyone their time to come forward and say, hey, let's look at this. Let's look at this. Where was everybody? A newspaper article got written. Oh, everybody's coming forward.
Supervisor Jacobson, please.
Well, when I saw Supervisor Boots' like-alon, I figured I better hit my button. Surprised me. It's frustrating because it puts the chicken before the egg. The Finance Director finally cleared it up. The problem is, we're going to take the revenue out, but the revenue is still going to come, and it's going to have to be booked there by state law. So my comment is this, is we really do need to start having the discussion. This isn't, many of you here have had more budgets at this county board than I have, but every budget that I've participated in as a county supervisor, we're always saying, let's talk about it. Well, and you know what? We do all get busy, but the next thing is, time flies by, and we're on to the next budget, and we haven't talked about it. We haven't looked at it. And if we can't find $3 million in a budget that's now grown to this size, that's just not realistic. It can be found. And the one thing I will point out about borrowing as opposed to just doing a continuous, let's put $3 million into it every year into resurfacing, is doing larger borrowings every so often within your rolling average under the general transportation aid formula will boost up your general transportation aid. So I would defer to infrastructure, HR, property, and finance, but it doesn't make sense to just keep doing the same standard amount year after year because you're going to be stuck in the same GTA formula. So I really do encourage the committees to take a look at this. I think the money can be found with everything else we spend money on. And the other frustrating point, this is just another example of comments that I think Vice Chair Dickinson made at the finance meeting, which I agree with, is there may have to just come a time where a direction has to be given to staff that we want to see a X percent budget reduction. Otherwise, bringing forth all these resolutions at the 11th hour, it doesn't go anywhere. So those are my comments. But I want to make it clear that I am 100% in support of the wheel tax being repealed and quickly, because, one, I think the money can be found, and two... and, and quickly because, one, I think the money can be found, and two, I can't tell you how many times in almost 10 years of local government I've heard, well, it's just another $23 or another $25, or it's only gonna raise your taxes by $10. It all adds up and there are some people in central Wisconsin who have kids who eat a meal for the first time when they get hot lunch. So another 25 bucks doesn't matter to me, may not matter to you, but it, it really does matter to some people in this community. So you have to take that into consideration when you're dealing with other people's money. Thank you.
Supervisor Fefrick, please.
So we spent a lot of time talking about this and we've discussed the future finance, HR, infrastructure meeting in December, which will really get to the intent of this amendment, so I'd like to call the question.
Is there any objection to question being called? Is there a second? Just a second, the clerk has to put in the motion.
There's no objection, you don't have to vote.
Okay. If there's no objection by our rules, we don't need a vote to call a question. Is there any objection? I will call a second time. Any objection to question being called? Okay, we will then proceed. Now, the motion is to approve Amendment Number 7. Again, it removes $2 million from the revenue. But just as everybody understands, the registration fee will still continue to come in, into that account and still be restricted by state statute and required to be used for infrastructure and will have to be at some point dealt with at that time. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is defeated. We are on, back to the, the, the motion on the floor is the Budget and Property Tax Levy Resolution. Supervisor Jensen, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to bring Amendment Number 7 up.
Seven was the one...
I'm sorry, Amendment Number 9. My apologies.
Amendment Number 9. Is there a second? Just a second, the clerk needs to put in Amendment Number 9. Okay, the motion is Supervisor Jensen and the second is Supervisor Poole. Supervisor Jensen, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Administrator Leonard and Director Fenske for their input on drafting this amendment. I offer this amendment to set our tax levy to not increase over last year's level, hopefully combined with a later amendment that's being proposed. We have had a lot of public comment at our hearings and privately via emails, voicemails and other means from our constituents. The message has been to stop raising taxes. Marathon County residents have implored and entrusted their county board representatives to be good stewards of the programs and services funded by their taxes. This amendment utilizes our highway and general fund reserves as an offset this year, but I recognize this is not sustainable without further addressing our program, services and intended capital improvement projects. Marathon County Administration and employees have carried out their duties in a cost-effective manner, generating healthy operating reserves by utilizing state and federal grants where available to complete projects and offer services using these dollars, and I commend, commend them for their actions. Economic inflation and the higher cost of goods have caused the residents to struggle in their personal financial situations. It wouldn't be right to sit at this table and assume we know how to spend their money better than our residents and requiring them to make other sacrifices while their taxes continue to increase. There has been discussion ample tonight about the future of the wheel tax and these conversations should happen and, and will happen. And given that 90-day notice to the state and the ordinance changes and the other work required to make it happen, I did not include that in my amendment as a planned reduction in revenue, but I'd like to thank Supervisor Hoppa for her amendment earlier as an opportunity to review and address that this evening. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Robinson, please.
I guess I, I get concerned when we start drawing down our, our fund balance and while we have $47 million in the fund balance, 29 of that is working capital using general GFOA standards of, of having money there. We've restricted 1.4 million, non-spendable is, is 5.4, assigned is, is 1.896 and there are others, 2.3. It's leaving a, a balance of 6.62 million in our, in our fund. That is our emergency fund that we've dipped into with, for the jail, we've dipped into it for other, other purposes over the years. When you look at us compared to our peers in, in the work done by Baker Tilly, which was included in the memo that Finance Director Fenske prepared, we are below our peers in terms of our fund balance. And the fund balance impacts a number of things, your ability to respond, it also has a potential impact, your bond rating. And while I, I am concerned about property taxes, I live in the city, my assessment went from $265,000 to $400,000, so I think I'm in for a relatively hefty increase. We still need to fund services. And I, I get concerned when we start drawing those down and assuming that, that the fund balance is a slush fund, as some have referred to it, it is not. It is there for important purposes in dealing with unforeseen needs, protecting us from, you're protecting us and be our ability to cash flow and maintain our, our bond rating. So I encourage you to vote no.
I guess I just wanna provide a little bit of more clarity and I think every supervisor received the memo to understand the clarity around the 12/31/2023 general fund balance. Again, the general fund balance starts out at 47 million, but that doesn't tell the whole story. The whole story is when you, when you pull out some things like advances, we don't have those dollars, non-county levied portion in delinquent properties, those we're working on trying to collect. So those, those aren't cash funds receivable, they're receivable, but they're not in the, they're not in the checking account. UW dorm maintenance is, this is set aside for specific, specifically that and can be only used for that, $186,000. Land records is, is a statutory requirement that those funds are restricted for computer use. Jail assessment is restricted for improvements in the jail. And then you get to the actual unassigned. You have the UW extension carryover, you have the sheriff's carryover, health carryover, CPZ carryover, you have working capital designation by our own ordinance and own formula. And then you get to what is considered remaining unassigned. That remaining unassigned clearly is $6,622,359 as of 12/31/2023. This board took action a few months ago to bower and loan to Bugtussle 8 million and it comes out of working capital. So when you take that 8 million into consideration, if you start at least from that $6 million of unassigned, remaining unassigned, that's not there anymore. So I like that the Chair of HR Finance am concerned, we haven't, one of the things that we specifically did when we actually went out and before we ever approved the 8 million to Bugtussle as a loan, we went to bond counsel and asked them, is this going to have an impact on our bond rating? And they provided clarity and said, no, it would not because you're booking a receivable equal to the loan. We're not doing that in this amendment. This amendment is clearly spending down reserves and that's, that's fine for this committee board to take that discussion up, but we haven't had the discussion with bond counsel, what impact that has on our bond rating and therefore doesn't have, or may have an, we don't know. We should have that answer. We should know whether it's going to increase the cost of bonding in the future. Okay, the clerk inadvertently cleared the request to speak and I do have it back up, I, I do have it, it's in the order. So I have the order on the paper, so the screen is not showing correct. Supervisor Marshall is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to address the John Rader from the, our auditing firm and his chart that showed that we have less than normal working capital. He also commented that not every county that he audits has a separate employee health benefits fund, which we have $11.3 million in, and that he was not concerned with our levels because we had a separate fund that was not in that chart. Remember that we also have a contingency fund of $800,000 at the administration level and $50,000 at HR finance level. Reserves are not the only place we can go if we have an unusual event in this next year. And we will likely add to our reserves with underspending this year. The budget hearing announcement showed, I believe, over $10 million year-to-date that we're under, that's not anticipated to be the year-end number, but I can't believe that out of that 10 million that there wouldn't be some, that we would be rolling into fund balance in the following year. Thank you.
Again, just to be clear, under our ordinances, any unspent is rolled over into the CIP fund and not rolled into the fund balance. It sits in the fund balance, but it rolls into the CIP fund by our own policy.
I do have a follow-up then, because last year, John Rader said that $1 million was rolled into the employee health benefits fund. So how did, how does that work?
I would look to Supervisor, for the Finance Director Fenske, if, provide clarity on that.
I do know that the HRA was funded through the comms absence fund balance, but for the remaining $200,000, sorry, but the remaining $200,000, I'd have to look at their last year budget to find out where, where that was anticipated, but the other portion was for the HRA contribution.
So the HRA, another acronym for health, health... reimbursement accounts that belongs to the employees that they set aside to pay their portion of the medical bills that they incur that they have to pay out of their pocket. They can use that, it's pre-tax money and by IRS statute, it's, it's held and then they can utilize that to pay their medical bills. Supervisor Foote, next, please.
I would just like to say that I had the Amendment Number 8 that was asking for the million off and so I am totally fine to go with Supervisor Jensen's accounting here. One of the things that I wanted to talk about was that my constituents also would like to have a tax relief, the wheel tax gone. That's what I heard all day. And I don't know if anyone noticed, like on our sales tax on page 37 of the budget, it talks, it shows how we budget for, for example, 16 million in sales tax, but we take in $17,184,000. So that million that, that we've taken in could easily go towards the million for Supervisor Jensen's amendment, budget amendment. Thank you.
Supervisor Boots, please.
Yes, I'm gonna bring something up from the past, priority-based budgeting. That's gonna age me a little bit. Correct me wrong, what was that, eight years ago we did priority-based budgeting? Somewhere in there? So I'm gonna piggyback off of what Supervisor Jacobson said, Mr. Power tie there.[1557.61][1557.61](Laughter).
Point of order.
So anyway, I do agree with what he said about Supervisor Dickinson too. Like, we, we did talk about that eight years ago, like going to a committee and saying, listen, we're gonna, you're gonna have to get rid of 5% somehow, each committee, like going through that process. But there again, it's a process. I don't like, and I'll state it again, these are great amendments, these have been fantastic amendments two months ago. So I think we need to start talking early, we say it every year, like Supervisor Jacobson said, we need to actually do it. These last-minute amendments, I just, I just don't like them, I don't think a lot of people like them. When it's last minute, we don't know the effect it's gonna have on everything in our budget. We gave a direction, that direction was followed, and now we're trying to change the direction at the last minute. So I just wanted to point that out, that I would be more than in favor looking back in the future at our committee levels and say, hey, we need to, you know, tighten our belts a little bit and do this so that next year we're at this, but we didn't do that.
Okay, Supervisor Sibert?
Thank you, Chairman Gibbs. First, I wanna thank Supervisor Jensen for bringing this forward. And I, I just think that we have to start someplace. I mean, we have to, we have to listen to our constituents. I mean, their money is tough. Not everybody here's money is tough, but they've got bills to pay, they've got taxes to pay, so we've gotta start someplace. And then the issue of, we have to bring this earlier, we've been talking about bringing this up earlier as long as I've been here. I don't think it's gonna happen because people have, wanna go home and they wanna sleep on it, they wanna think about it, they wanna research it. We can't start this in June and, and it would take that much. I think this is just a, a necessary evil that we're gonna have to put up with and get through it. Thank you. And I'm in favor of this.
Supervisor Wilhoun, please. Okay. So next we have Supervisor Sandalski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This probably be a question for Corp Counsel. As far as the bond ratings, is that, is that, maybe you could clear this up, is that kinda like credit ratings? So if you take, take a loan out and you're faithful to paying it back, that would increase your credit ratings? So is that, is that, or can you clear that up with me? I'm just kinda get a feel for that.
I am not the right person to answer that question. I don't do the maths as well as other people on staff. I think Director Fenske probably could answer that question. I don't think they're directly correlated, but she could explain better than I could.
Your bond rating kinda tells how creditworthy you are, so the higher your bond rating generally qualifies you for a better interest rate. That's the benefit to the county.
One thing to add relative to the factors, Kenny, you're alluding to Supervisor, one of the factors is the health of your various reserves, whether you are following your reserve policies that you have adopted. And one thing you largely don't have control over, which is your size. Marathon County, based on the size of our budget, we are at the highest bond rating possible, AA1. There are counties, of course, that are at lower bond ratings from that and it does, the outcome of that is essentially you get a, at least arguably, the interest rate that you would receive from interested borrowers during your bond release would be less favorable than the interest... than the interest rate you would like to receive through the course of that borrowing offering. I don't know, Sam, if you off the top of your head know the other, I think there's seven factors that generally they look at.
Usually it's your general fund or your financial health. There's some economic factors in there. One thing that they said that's unique for Wisconsin, that most, well, pretty much all counties get kind of dinged with, if you will, is the fact that we have a levy limit. It's out of our control, but that always brings it down just a smidgen. And then there's a few other things, but I think those were the main factors of your bond rating, which is done by like S&amp;P or Moody's.
Supervisor Robinson, please.
I believe some of the other factors are the diversity of the economy, the strength of the local economy, and other things that all go into establishing that rating. I just want to point out that one of the reasons why we budget conservatively, for instance, on sales tax, is you can look at this year's collection, in the first six months, three months we were up, three months we were down, it's unpredictable, but at the end of the year, those are the dollars that go to fund the capital improvement plan one year removed. And so if we budget as tight as some people would like, we will not have any money for the capital improvement plan. Not that that's bad, but that is the reality. And this year, I think we're putting $7,79,000 into capital improvements from the fund balance, so we would lose that ability in either cut back on projects. And we've got, the Deputy Administrator has put together a tentative five-year plan for capital. We've been trying to project out the cost. I think in year three is the potential highway expansion, and there are a number of other very significant projects in that list that we would need to fund. We'd have to evaluate it, but I think we did that because we got tired of the library roof not being funded and the jail floor sagging, and we wanted to have a continuous funding source for our routine projects, our rolling stock and parks, sheriff's office, highway and others. So I just urge caution on how tight we want to budget and how much we want to go after our reserves.
I did have the opportunity to have a discussion with the Deputy Administrator in looking at a projection on the CIP projects, and I would classify them in two categories. Rolling stock, which is replacement of squads, replacement of computers in a normal business cycle. And then you have outside maintenance projects, whether they be roofs, whether they be HVACs. And we have set the direction that says, look, we want to replace stuff at end of cycle to maintain the integrity of the property that the taxpayers have entrusted us to. And also then, we go to anything else of outside projects, special projects. One example of that would be the Regional Forensic Science Center. That was a project that was outside of maintenance or rolling stock. And I asked him to give me a rough projection on what the cost is for just the normal maintenance outside of, and exclude the highway shop, and we're looking at $10 million cost a year for the next five years. So when we start to, and this has been a strategy that boards before us have set, that we want to conservatively budget with a strategy that those funds roll over to fund the capital improvement plan a year after the audit. Again, reducing the need to bond for those projects. There is other counties that use a different strategy. They use the strategy of, no, we're going to budget tighter and then effectively bond for those projects when they come up, whatever that level is, and they bond each year. That's a strategy. But to change strategies in the middle and say, we're going to do part of one or part of the other, I think really, we haven't really had long-term discussion on what that impact is. Supervisor Jensen, please.
Thank you, Chair. So we heard about the sales tax revenue and how it was under-projected, came in really good. And Supervisor Robinson mentioned the $7.8 million rollover SIP from 2023 that's coming available in 2025 here. Shared revenue is up 200K. ARPA, I believe we have 10.7 million kind of available as unassigned. Please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, there's roughly, not quite, one and a half, maybe two million that's unassigned. Everything else has been assigned for.
Okay, my apologies.
In our CRP project list, the funding from last year's budget, when the 2023 budget was approved, we approved about $11 million of ARPA funding for CIP projects on the 2024 plan.
But the unencumbered number, is that not 10.7?
No. No, no, that is inaccurate. It's about 2 million. It's less than 2 million.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I think Chris is in the back. I think our ARPA cleanup resolution we're working on is 2.4? 2.35. I was pretty close. 2.35 of reallocation of ARPA. The lion's share of the American Rescue Plan Act funds were utilized for capital expenditures in the last two budget processes, which effectively allows you to utilize, allowed the board to utilize existing capital improvement dollars for things that historically you haven't, which is highway. You typically dip into highway reserves for that, but the last two budgets you did significantly less based on the use of ARPA for capital projects that freed up the use of capital money for highway.
Okay, thank you. I guess, you know, looking at those numbers, those projections, you know, this amendment has two draws from reserve, $1 million from highway, $1 million from general reserve, I'm sorry, 600 some K from general reserve. Point of that is, is this money is kind of easily replaceable with some of those other funds and figures coming in. So a lot of the conversation tonight was, it would be good if we started somewhere. I think this is starting somewhere, and over this next year, we can look at where we change programs, where we change services, where we do some other accounting changes, where we can make up for this and have this reduction this coming year for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Supervisor Poole, please.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. And like others have said, talking to constituents when I was out campaigning, doing doors, running for this office, heard time and time again how much inflation, cost of living has gone up and is hurting people. And true, inflation's, you know, down to 3%, a little less now, but over the last few years, it's still risen 20% to 30%. So people are still catching up with that. And I think, you know, it's certainly good, we can figure out a long-term strategy for funds, and I think having solid reserves that are specified with, you know, state statutes is a good thing, but I think this year, let's give our taxpayers a break and not raise a levy for them. Thank you.
Supervisor Sandalsky, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So some of you weren't here in the 2024 budget cycle, but we had by far the largest tax increase in well over 10 years at a 5% increase on the levy. This was not being responsible to taxpayers whatsoever. In the past years, we have, the board has actually had negative levy. You look back many years, maybe 10, 12 years, I was looking, there was negative levies. And when the county is sitting on such large funds, that would bother me one bit. So one of our objectives for the board is affordable housing. Increasing property tax not only decreases affordable housing purchasing power, renters will also see increase in their fees to make up for the increase in property taxes. Therefore, any increase today has a direct effect on affordability of a home or rental. We need to be fiscally responsible to the people we serve. Considering the last year's massive increase, it's time for the struggling taxpayers to get a break. If you're willing to do what's right for the people and serve out and look for the best interest, you will support this amendment. Also, when you look at the reassessment values, the tax, some of the people's taxes is going to be going up quite drastically, so maybe we can give them a little break here at the county. Thank you.
Supervisor Jacobson, please.
I just want to echo the points of Supervisor Poole, and also, we can say we're going to look at doing it next year, but I just have to agree, there comes a time that until you put your own feet to the fire, you just won't do it next year, is my fear, which is why I'll support the amendment. And the comment, you know, about the reserves being where they are and recognizing that we just did, you know, approved a borrowing for Bug Tussle, my question is, well, then why on earth did we expose ourselves like that, which is why I was one of the five people that voted against it? So with that, I'll call the question.
Is there any objection to question being called? We have two people in the queue, Supervisor Unger and Supervisor Marshall. Any objection to question being called? Okay, there's no objection, so we will hear from Supervisor Unger and Supervisor Marshall, and then we will proceed to vote.
Thank you, Chair. I am definitely in support of amendment number nine.
Supervisor Marshall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For those of you who were here last year, there was a last year we had a budget amendment to use fund balance for tax relief. However, we were told that we may need to replace $2 million, that we were counting on getting a federal grant for the forensic science center, but because of the Congress using continuing resolutions, we would be unable to get that grant until they officially did a budget. We did get that grant for the forensic science center, but that was used, and they said, you know, we can't do it this year, but we'll be sure to do it next year. So for those of you who weren't here last year, we heard it again, like not this year, but next year. I think the time is, it's this year.
Okay, again, question's been called. We are going to proceed to vote on the motion. The motion is to approve amendment number nine, and that effectively uses $1 million of working capital reserve and 600,000 of highway funds, and lowers the property tax increase to zero. Is everybody clear? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Mask, we're at the vote. The vote is now, vote to support amendment number nine. Again, that vote would be to remove or use $1 million of working capital reserve and 600,000 of highway funds and remove that from the tax levy.
If we could have just a moment, see, Sam's got a question.
We want to be clear on what the amendment is and what the amendment does.
You said it backwards.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it's 600,000 from working capital and a million from highway reserves. You still have the opportunity? I haven't. You can change your vote if you choose to. Is everybody clear what they, and nobody wishes to change their vote? All right, we will proceed. And the motion is passed. And now we are back to the budget as amended now. Supervisor Sandalsky.
Can we just get a clarification, where we at with the levy right now?
With that amendment passed, it went from $59,851,312 down to, sorry, I was in the middle of adjusting. To $58,204,103, so a reduction of $1,647,209 with a mill rate of, the debt service, that would be at 2.5. Yeah, that should be. So from $3.78 per mill rate down to $3.69.
Supervisor Foote, please.
I'm not sure if I need to just take my amendment away.
Don't have to do anything if you don't want to offer it.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Supervisor Jensen, next.
I'd like to bring amendment six to the floor.
Amendment number six, is there a second, just a second? The clerk needs to, please, nobody push making a second until the clerk has it up.
Let me put the motion in, too, please.
Motion by Supervisor, excuse me, Supervisor, Supervisor Jensen and second by Supervisor Boots. Supervisor Marshall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked the treasurer, based on the intent attacking the tax-dated process and the tax-dated properties, if there was any additional revenue that she believed that that would generate, and she was in support of $250,000 in additional revenue related to the penalties and the interest on those tax-dated properties. So as we're taking those on, getting payments, and making sure that we're actually going after those to get the payments, it was supported that $250,000 was a reasonable amount to add to the budget. Thank you.
Supervisor Jensen, please.
Thank you, Chair. From my discussions with Administrator Leonard and Director Fenske, by passing this amendment, this would effectively lower the tax levy to zero this year in conjunction with the past amendment that did pass.
I want to make sure that that's accurate, so I look to...
The increase, it wouldn't drop the tax levy to zero, but it would drop the increase in overall tax levy to 0%.
Thank you for the clarification. That's what I was after.
Okay, Supervisor Sandalsky, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to see, I also support this amendment.
Supervisor Robinson, please.
I have a question for Finance Director Fenske. In light of the earlier motion, which dropped our levy increase, and if this motion is adopted, where are we, are we losing all of our net new construction revenue in the budget, and therefore will it penalize us in future years? Or do we have the ability to recapture that?
We did affect the debt service levy as opposed to the operating levy to not mitigate that option in the future or to be penalized in the future. So that's why you see a lot of the...
of the budget amendments kind of go through a couple of different accounts to accomplish the tasks at hand.
So we are capturing, we are capturing, and the reason is, the levy limits imposed by the state, which are some of the most restrictive in the nation, limit our ability to increase the levy to what's known as net new construction, not inflationary pressures. And if we don't capture that, you may lose it for future years. This year, it was 1.78% of the levy. Last year was, I think, 2.32%. You want to be careful, because that is, we had 200 and some million dollars of new construction that were in the levy. So if nothing else changed, the rate, tax rate would not have changed, because you've got new property in which to apply that tax. So I think we want to always be careful that we never ignore or throw out or fail to utilize that net new construction when we adapt our budgets.
Other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Everybody understanding that we're increasing the revenue and decreasing debt levy, or, yeah, increasing, decreasing, increasing the revenue recognized from interest and penalties on delinquent taxes in that account, and decreasing debt levy by the full 250,000 additional. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried, but it's not unanimous. We're moving on. Any further discussion on the budget? Supervisor Robinson, please.
Lacking any amendments, I just want to thank the Administrator and the Finance Director and all the department heads in the work, for their work on the budget. We continue to transition from Cuyinta into Workday and the legacy that that created, and we've got the budget later than what we would have liked to have gotten it. We've had discussions with having next year's budget before the County Board at the September Board meeting to give all the committees an additional time to review and have input. But I do want to pick up on Supervisor Boots's comments. We started this process last summer. I went to every standing committee at least once, many of them multiple times, to talk about the budget. These issues didn't come up. And I strongly encourage you, if you have those strong concerns, bring them up early. Don't wait till the last minute. You know, it's a long process. If you've got those concerns, I know we've had conversations with a number of supervisors over the months on other things, but don't wait till a week before the budget. It makes it difficult, and sometimes difficult to interpret, understand, and fully vet the consequences of it. So start earlier. If you have concerns, build, bring them up at the time of the budget, assumptions are developed. That's what the Administrator works off of, and it'll be a better process. But thank you all for your involvement, participation, and interest.
Supervisor Marash, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring forward Amendment Number Five.
Okay, just a second for the clerk to enter Amendment Number Five. Okay, Supervisor Marash with the motion, and Supervisor Ungar with a second. Supervisor Boots, please.
So this went through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and we agreed to keep this in the fund. So I guess I'm confused, but anyway, I guess I would like to request that Judge O'Neill be able to speak onto this.
Is there any objection to having Judge O'Neill? Okay, one... Okay, so this would require a vote by the board, because there is an objection. It is a simple majority to allow the judge to address the board on this item. And so I'll wait till the clerk is ready.
Can I preface why I want her to speak? Is that, would that be in order?
Pardon me?
Can I, can I say why I would like her to speak? Would that be in order?
Absolutely.
So the CJCC, what basically was, the funding, why the funding was going to stay in place, she could explain that a little better, why it was staying in place.
Can I explain why I said no?
Why the recommendation was from the CJCC. Okay. Supervisor Marash.
I just want to explain why I objected. It's because I have an amendment to the amendment.
Okay, but again, there's been a request, so I've got to honor the request to take a vote on to allow the judge to speak. Again, so a yes vote will allow the judge to address the board, a no vote would say no, that he wouldn't be allowed to address the board. Okay, because of our system, we need a second for, we're making a motion to get it into the system to vote, so I would need a second. Is there somebody willing to second the, Supervisor Rosenberg with the second? Okay, so we have on the floor a motion to allow the judge to address the board on the OWI amendment, and it's been seconded. Okay, we'll, we'll proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the judge is granted authority to address the board. So Judge O'Neill, if you would, please, and thank you for spending your evening with us this evening. And Judge O'Neill happens to chair the CJCC. So Judge O'Neill, please.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. This is a matter that has been discussed by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. As you may be aware or may not, we do have two operating treatment courts in Marathon County, and one is designated for the OWI population, and one is designated for the drug-addicted population. The six judges in this county fully support full funding for both of our treatment courts. We have personal experience in each of these courts, and we have seen the effect of the courts and how they have changed lives, how they have turned individuals who are addicted to substances, and quite frankly, unable to navigate their own lives, let alone their children's lives, or the lives of the people that care for them. We've witnessed how they have been reunited with their children. Children who have been placed outside the home have been reunited with their parents. We've witnessed births during treatment courts where participants have given birth to their children, and their children go home rather than to foster care. And as somebody who's worked in the criminal justice system for decades, I've witnessed the epidemic of opioid addiction, as well as general substance use disorder explode throughout the nation, but specifically in our county. And for years, the system has struggled to figure out how to control this, and we have struggled, and we have not succeeded. Treatment courts are the one opportunity where we have found hope over the last decade to two decades. And I will be the first to tell you that when I first got involved in it, it was counterintuitive. The thought to give individuals treatment rather than incarceration was not the philosophy of criminal justice that I had been raised on. But watching that change, and again, throughout the nation and the state, adopting treatment over incarceration is clearly the better option. We're saving jail day stays. We are saving resources long term with regard to providing services to families and to children, and we are creating law-abiding, contributing members to our own community by treating them rather than simply incarcerating them. So the judges of this county fully support full funding for our treatment courts. We have witnessed the benefits to our community, the cost savings to our county with regard to incarceration, as well as the changes in our social services department and the, and the work that the social services department has been able to do for these families. So again, we would ask that, the judges would ask that funding continue, the Criminal Justice Council asks that it continues, and that is just our recommendation. I will note that the OWI court-specific funding, I understand there's, there has been a change in law, which has made it difficult for us to continue with that segment of our treatment courts, as we have. We're working on improving that or modifying that to expand more drug-related treatment, rather than having the OWI because of the change in law. But moving forward, we do think that full funding of both programs is necessary for our treatment courts in general to continue to succeed, while the drug court, we hope, will expand. The funding for the OWI court also supports the drug court. There are resources that are shared by both treatment courts, specific to housing. The participants are always, quite frankly, in need of sober living when they're released from custody. They don't have a family to go to, because their families have understandably closed the door on them. And so funding for the sober living housing is shared, drug testing costs are shared. The drug treatment court does receive grant funding through a TAD grant fund. The county does, is required to contribute toward that with matching funds, and some of the funds that are allocated right now to the OWI court are shared to that. So while I understand that there may be some argument that the OWI court really is phasing out, that tree, that resource, that funding is needed for our general treatment court. So again, that's why the judges would urge you to please continue to fully fund that, as well as the CJCC, who unanimously support continued funding for treatment courts.
Okay, Supervisor Sandalsky, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just give an explanation as to why I had this, why I wrote this amendment. As Wisconsin Act 106 was passed, fifth and sixth offenses are now classified as a Class G felony under the state statutes of 3.46, 3.46.65, 939.50, 973.01, and 973.02, thus making fifth and sixth offense mandatory prison time between one and 10 years and a $600,000 to $25,000 fine. In the past, this is where the majority of the OWI court resided. As of my knowledge, we currently have two people enrolled in the OWI court. I would assume these are probably fourth offenses. This is not a sustainable OWI court, at a cost of $107,528, that's $53,764 per person. I also had considered pulling the drug court as well, because they've had issues in the past, and I don't know if they're still having issues with the dealers slipping through the cracks and getting into these programs. We had a district attorney and a local FBI agent speak on this matter in the public safety. After conversations with Sheriff Bill, he is going to be working with this committee to revamp the Oversight Committee, and at $104,000 to the property tax levy, I thought this was a fair value for the 20 addicts in treatment, and as long as we can get those dealers removed from the program. They also receive $150,000 grants, so that's $254 for the drug court. And the thing I didn't like hearing was, there was some drifting of money between the two courts, between the alcohol court and the drug court. So that's, that really concerns me there. So they're drifting money out of the OWI court. So I still want to keep the amendment up. And also, I'd like to say, thank Supervisor Wilhelm for raising questions yesterday at the HR Finance meeting, as I was unable to attend with my employment obligations. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Marash, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to clarify to Judge O'Neill, I did not mean any disrespect by not wanting you to speak. That was not my intention whatsoever. So my amendment to the amendment is to fully fund the OWI court. However, it wouldn't be an OWI court. It would be to specifically, as Judge O'Neill has mentioned several times with CJCC and at Public Safety, the courts that are co-mingling males and females are not working. And we've heard repeatedly that they wanted to separate those out. So that is my intention with this amendment to the amendment, to fund it, but have this money specifically go to fund separate programs for males and females. So I would request that Judge O'Neill speak to that point about the courts with the males and the females, if that would be allowed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there any objection to having Judge O'Neill address the board on the concerns about separation of two different potential sexes in the treatment court facilities? Any objection? Judge O'Neill, please.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Marash. I certainly take no personal offense. I understand we have rules for various reasons. I'm not always certain why, but with regard to that motion, it is true that evidence-based practices does suggest that separating genders is the most effective treatment, and that is something that we are working toward, and we would like to. We had separated our treatment programs to focus on alcohol addiction and drug addiction, and that's how we have started these programs. The research throughout the years has suggested, though, that it is best practice to separate genders, and that is something that we would like to work toward, because it is best practice. And also, having worked in the courts myself, I am one of the drug treatment courts judges, the participants share really personal stuff during the court process. And each week, I address each of the participants, and oftentimes, it is very difficult for females in particular to share some of their most intimate details of their lives in front of other males. So it is nationally recognized to have two different tracks, one for females and one for males. So that is appropriately recognized, and thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address that.
Thank you, Judge. So I think we're gonna, I'm gonna have Sam address the board as far as the amendment to the amendment that's being offered, to ensure that we're putting and getting on the amendment the intent, and I believe, Supervisor Marash, please correct me if I'm wrong, the intent is to move the $107,000 that is in the original amendment to treatment courts to develop the separate treatment courts for sex identity. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the amendment would read, the first line on that would be the exact same, but the second line would then increase all of the same expenditures and all of the same accounts, but under the drug court, which is CNT underscore 0124, effectively moving the budget from the OWI court to the drug court. So we would eliminate how number two is written, and again, that would be replaced by increasing all of the expenditure accounts under the drug court in the same proportions.
Okay, is there a? Do you have the amendment? Do you have to make a motion? Is there a second to the amendment to the amendment? Supervisor Boots with the second to the amendment to the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Supervisor Dickinson, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the only, the only question or slash concern I would have in that is if we, if we, now we're starting, in essence, kind of a new, I don't want to call it a program, but we're, we're now going to move this money into this place where a new procedure is going to hap, is going to occur. So my concern then becomes what happens next year? Is it now going to be, okay, well, now that we're starting down this path, we might need a little bit more to do that. So now we're setting this, and I see Supervisor Boots is shaking his head. So that's just only my concern. I'm not saying the merits of it, anything, but that would be my concern. Thank you.
Supervisor Marshall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question for the Public Safety Chair or Vice Chair, if they could speak to, was that ever discussed at your committee, requiring the male and female separate courts? Thank you.
Public Safety Chair Jacobson, please.
Quite honestly, I don't recall, but we talked about this so many times, that Judge O'Neil, if you could speak to that, was, did you mention that in your presentation at Public Safety? If you did, it was in passing.
Correct. It was, it was in passing. It was mentioned, but it was not fast discussed.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Boots, please.
So that was discussed at the CJCC, and that's where it was actually, and I apologize, Supervisor Marash, I didn't know you were making that amendment. But anyway, it was discussed and per Supervisor Dickinson. So Billab and a couple other people have said they champion this from CJCC and see how they could, they're already working on it. They've already started doing that for the CJCC. I don't know where it's at right now because we haven't had a meeting, but I can tell you that this was discussed at the CJCC, so.
Okay, Supervisor Jensen, please.
Just some clarification, please. Thank you, Chair. So does this eliminate the OWI court and just fully move it to a drug court with potentially two genders?
I think it develops the additional separate two genders in the OWI, or in the drug court, correct?
But it also does take the two individuals that are currently in the OWI court and does let them get through the process and graduate from the program.
Conclude to graduation, correct?
Yes.
And then one follow-up, please. Does this have any effect on the additional state, federal money coming into the drug court by splitting off into two?
Refer to Administrator Leonard?
No, it doesn't. It shouldn't impact the TAD funding at all.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Again, so now we are on the amendment to the amendment to fully fund or take the $107,000 now and move that to the drug court and for the development of the specialty based on gender. Everybody clear on the amendment to the amendment? Okay, all those, and we'll, we'll proceed to vote? Supervisor Unger, please. Thank you, we'll proceed. And the motion is carried and is unanimous. Thank you. Now, on the amendment as amended, any further discussion? Supervisor Foot, please.
I would like to hear amendment number four.
We're still on the amendment, well, we made the amendment, we approved the amendment to the amendment. Now we're back to the amendment as amended, and we have to vote on that.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Does anybody wish to speak on the amendment as amended? Supervisor Sandalsky.
Can I just pull that now, I guess, since we get this cleared up?
It's already on the floor, it's being, it's being discussed, and there's a motion to the motion, an amendment to the amendment. And so now we're back to the amendment as amended. And is everybody clear on what we'll be voting on? Now we'll be voting on amendment number? This is amendment number five. Supervisor Dayback, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just got a question on this, as far as a no vote would mean what and a yes vote would mean what?
Okay, a no vote would defeat the motion totally, and the amendment and the amendment to the amendment would go away. So there would be as though nothing has taken place. A yes vote approves what we just amended the amendment to, meaning it would move the $107,000 to the drug court for the development of a gender identified, identified separate court. Is everybody clear? Supervisor Happa.
I do have one question. I've been mulling this. So people with their fourth, fifth, and sixth, especially the fifth and sixth offense, are going to have the opportunity to go into this program? They are not.
State statute changed, and their sixth, fifth and sixth are statutory mandatories.
Okay, and the fourth?
Fourths are still available.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. And now we are back to the budget as, with the amendments in it. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Supervisor Ritter, please.
Okay, I just want to kind of add a little context because there's a lot of conversation tonight about, we got to start this earlier, but just to add a little context to the newer supervisors, my first year on the board, this meeting lasted until midnight. We had, I believe, 18 amendments we went through, and some of those amendments, we had amendments to the amendments to the amendments. Now try to keep all that straight. So we had asked, instead of getting all this thrown at us last minute, could we start this process earlier in the year? So that's, that's what we did. We started, I believe, in May, where Supervisor Robinson came to that committee level, came to our meetings to get the conversation started already. That way, we could spread it out through the entire year instead of being slammed at the last minute. And I felt that was very effective because we could thoroughly vet all of this stuff. And I think it was a huge benefit to our constituents, because instead of us making snap decisions, kind of wondering where we're going to get this money if we don't spend it here or there, we took the time to talk it over at committee level. And I believe last year, our budget meeting was bing-bang done because the homework was done all ahead of time. Just a little background for everybody. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the budget? We are now at a place where the budget, the 2025 budget, and the amendments are included in the budget. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Supervisor Foot, please.
Now, I would like to hear from, listen to amendment number four, or consider?
Your motion is to approve amendment number four.
Amendment number four.
Okay, just a second, have the clerk put it in. Okay, this is the aquatic therapy pool. Is there a second? Supervisor Wilhelm with the second. Supervisor Robinson, please.
Gary Olson is here, but I'll try to summarize where we are. This is a, an amendment trying to reduce the county subsidy in, or cut it in half relative to the aquatic therapy pool, and it's based upon year-to-date projections of income and revenue. The problem is, is that it doesn't factor in depreciation, and I was on the Community Services Board for a while, and they have routinely charged each of the programs depreciation for a variety of reasons, but including trying to build up that reserve for replacement costs. And depreciation is typically booked at the end of the year, not at the beginning of the year, in that it would, would be coming and being booked. So I think what we want to do, and if those who have been around, there's a stronger support of the aquatic therapy pool on this board than myself, we want to raise the half, the one-half share from the community to fund it. But we need to continue to make sure that it's viable and that we can have the repairs done, and that's why the depreciation is needed, and that's why we should not approve this, this amendment.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Boots, please.
I would say the same because this never once came through Health and Human Services, and it's considered health care, health and humans, this is part of our jurisdiction, and never once was this brought forward. So this could have been brought forward at any time in the whole year, like I said before, so I will not be approving this. Thank you.
Supervisor Gesselman, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure if, if the county board really understands the great goodness that this warm water pool does to the residents. People come in, wheelchairs, walkers, coming in off of surgeries, back surgeries, whatever. And I think that this, through the therapy that is provided at this warm water pool is incredible. And, and I think that we've, Marathon County's been supportive of this for a long time, Mr. Robinson's, you know, several years ago, I think it was $3 million that the community came forth to enable this, the new warm water pool to function. And I think it is an incredible asset for the citizens of Marathon County who, who really need therapy, physical therapy. It's also emotional therapy. The therapists and the people that use a community pool, as a community pool, I think, really feel a great benefit to this pool, and I would hate to have this be diminished in any way. So I would, I'm voting against this. Thank you.
Supervisor Marshall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you read the amendment, it does say that aquatic therapy pool is an asset. I did look at the financials for North Central Healthcare as year-to-date August, and noticed that in that particular area that they were running better than budget. I consulted with North Central Healthcare's Finance Director and asked him to forecast if that budget, better-than-budget was going to continue, and he gave me a year-end forecast of $192,000 better-than-budget. There was no mention of no depreciation not being in that number. So this amendment was brought forward under those circumstances, and I understand that if there's new information that was not shared with me, that you would want to vote against the budget or against this amendment. But those are the circumstances to which it came forward, and it was looking at the actuals from North Central Healthcare.
In light of, you know, and I had this discussion or had, had this comment at HR Finance Committee when we talked about that, because I do chair the North Central Community Services Program Board. And looking at their financials, again, there is allocations per the county apportionment to support for NCHC, and it is allocated out amongst those programs, the various programs. And some programs show a profit, some programs show a loss. I can tell you that we, and the, the executive for NCHC came to me today with some very concerning, a very concerning message that he received today. And I would love to have him address this board and understand that when we look at this as a whole, all of the funding that the county supports also supports all the other programs. We are asking, and we have an agreement, understanding that NCHC is going to try to fund the debt service that is associated with that, with that remodel and the nursing home down there. But just today, we found out that the funding level that we're getting supplemental payments from the state was cut $800,000 for Mountview. That is going to affect the ability of, at least we need some additional clarity, but that is going to affect the, the budget for next year and the ability for this, that entity to fund the debt service, because we ratcheted up the debt service to $2.5 million next year. The other part of that is, and North Central Healthcare helps manage and manages Pinecrest, Lincoln County. Lincoln County got a similar message that their, their aid from the state is cut $730,000. That's $1.5 million of revenue that's been taken out of those two operations, Mountview Care Center and Pinecrest. So when we talk about, we could reallocate this money to debt service, or NCHC may not be able to meet their obligation, they're trying to, but they have to generate profit in some of these project, in some of these programs to be able to cover that debt, at least or have the depreciation in the program to be able to understand the financials. So I would encourage us to vote no on this amendment, but again, I think it's because we don't have enough information when the state just changed their allocation and cut the funding to Mountview Care Center by $800,000 moving forward and $730,000 for Pinecrest. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would, we'll move and proceed to vote. And we'll proceed. And the motion is defeated. Any further discussion? Any further amendments? Supervisor Sandalsky, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How about amendment, amendment number eight?
So that was the similar amendment as amendment number nine, but it is totally separate. Is there, is, are you making a motion to, okay, there's a motion to approve, is there, just a second? Is there a second to amendment number? Eight. Is there a second to Amendment Number Eight? Okay. Seeing none, the motion... Supervisor Happa, that's a second to the motion? Okay. There's a motion and made and a seconded. Supervisor Boots, please. Supervisor Poole is in the queue. Is there objection to question being called? Is there an objection to question being called? Okay. Supervisor Poole, you're recognized.
I am all for tax cutting, but with Amendment Number Nine passing, having both Eight and Nine passes a bridge too far, so let's not do this.
I think the other concern that you have there is, effectively, you may now be dipping below net new construction. And I would just ask for clarity from the Finance Director Fenske, if that would be accurate, by another $1 million out of reserves to reduce. Just want to provide clarity to the board of what they're voting on.
Thank you so much. Where's my debt service? I'll start, and then I'll let Lance finish. What we would probably do is, there is $2,259,816 in the debt service, which is outside the levy limit, and then I'll pass it over to Administrator.
So the short answer is, you wouldn't be below your operating levy limit, which I would always advise you, make sure you maximize your operating limit. But as your administrator, I don't think I'd be doing my job unless I told you, consistent with the assessment of Supervisor Poole, I am a bit concerned of the ramifications of next year, if you have another $1 million off. As was alluded to, I'm standing in front of Chris, but he did a nice job putting together a five-year CIP plan, which has a projection of about $9 million over each of the next several years for capital needs. And we just heard about... Gary brought great news with losing $800,000 of funding, and you have 7.7 million in your debt schedules that you need to service. So I'm going to start tomorrow on figuring out how to do that. But if you have another million off, it's just additional concern for me, but of course, whatever the will of the board is, we'll do our best to affect it.
Okay. Question's been called. Is everybody clear on what we would be voting on right now? Again, this would effectively reduce the debt levy by another $1 million, and that would take your property tax increase to an actual decrease. And with the... In light of all of the other information that was just provided today, I would... We'll... Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay. Thank you. So we'll proceed, and the motion is defeated, and we will move on. Any further amendments to the budget? Any further discussion on the budget as amended? Supervisor Zhang, please.
Call the question.
Question has been called. Is there any objection to question being called on the budget as amended? Supervisor Sibert was in the queue.
Thank you, Chairman Gibbs. I'd just like to bring up, we had a lot of talk about getting this done earlier, getting it as soon as we can and get it to the board as soon as we can. Now, tonight, it was a good example. We didn't get information on the therapy pool till the last possible second. So if we would have voted this earlier and voted that out, that would have been a big loss. So just, that's all I have.
Any further discussion? Excuse me. Question was called. There was no objection. Debate is ended. We are now at the point of voting on the official budget for 2025 as amended, with the amendments included. If I could have the Finance Director read now the modified now budget?
We should be good to go.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Nope. You're okay. I'm just going to crouch down here so I can see my computer at the same time that I'm addressing the board here. So on the resolution that is before you in the packet... Let's go to the right one here. Thank you so much. I do appreciate it. About two-thirds of the way down, where it says budget changes to tax levy, the number that is going to change there is the third one, the debt levy, from $4,156,373 down to $2,259,164. In the next section, where it says, "Be it further resolved, the Marathon County Board of Supervisors does hereby adopt the 2025 Marathon County budget of..." Instead of $181,691,076, it will be $198,764,316 after all of the amendments. And then, the very last change will be at the top of the next page, "Be it further resolved, the Marathon County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize a property tax levy in the amount of $57,954,103."
Thank you for that quick math and that exercise in... In math exercise, anyway, in accounting. Any questions been called? We are... Is everybody clear on what you're voting on now? You're voting on the completed budget as amended. We'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Shaneborn, please. Thank you. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried, and we have a budget for 2025, and it is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to announcements and/or requests. Just one announcement from the Chair, and that is, the Executive Committee has been canceled this week for lack of items. And any other announcements and/or requests? Supervisor Robinson, please.
Looking at Supervisor Marash, but HR Finance and Property will be moving its December meeting to the fifth, and we will be having a Supervisor Poole, a extended meeting, but all in one. We'll be meeting at one with the Infrastructure Committee to talk about the facilities and the Highway Reserve Fund. And then, we're meeting at three with the Extension Education and Economic Development Committee, and we'll be talking about a number of things, including TIF and the university, the future of UWMC, also known as UW Stevens Point Wassa, based upon a task force that's been appointed.
Any other announcements? All right. I'm looking for that last famous motion. Is there a motion? Motion by Supervisor Kroll, seconded by Supervisor Longenhahn. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Have a great rest of your evening, folks.